Good afternoon, I'm Kim Melnick, School Board Vice Chair. And the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at four o'clock on this 19th of August 2022. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on www.bbschools.com, broadcast on BBCD channel 47 and on Zoom. It is the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session of the School Board meeting to begin at 6:00. The Administrative Informal and Workshop Session will conclude no later than 5:45 to allow the School Board and the School Administration to prepare for the formal session of the School Board meeting at 6:00. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, President Amy Einstein Lab, Laura Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weeks.
Okay, and for the record, I have a statement from Mrs. Rye. Mrs. Rye is absent from this workshop due to being unexpectedly delayed in her departure today from South Carolina, where she continues to deal with pressing matters related to her late mother's estate. She will be joining us for the formal meeting later this evening. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Does anybody have anything? Okay, seeing that, I do have a, um, another message from the Chair. These are her words, and I'm just reading via her protection. The Chair has asked me to share the following remarks in her absence. "We are all well aware that election season is upon us. As a governing body, individual Board members often have differing viewpoints, as it should be. Some recent concerning public comments have been brought to my attention from both colleagues and constituents alike. I respectfully ask each of you to keep in mind our code of ethics, stick to the issues, and avoid personally disparaging colleagues, either directly or through innuendo. As role models for the broader community, I challenge us as a body to set the bar of stability for others to follow. No further discussion on this issue is planned for today. Mrs. Rye welcomes the opportunity to converse privately with any of you as you please." Okay, and now on to varsity sports entry prices, and I presented, oh. Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct. Okay, and with that, we will move on to the concerns brought forward about the regulations. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Roberts.
Yes, so thank you, Vice Chairwoman Melnick. Uh, I want to start by sharing some exciting news that was shared with us yesterday about the Virginia Department of Education. And that's information we shared with the school divisions' directors of testing that based on preliminary SOL performance data, BBCPS will once again be accredited across all 82 testing schools. You'll hear more about this in an official capacity in the coming days, but this is no small accomplishment. I'd like to expand on that accomplishment just for a moment. Recall, we began the year in September of 2021 facing an increase in the number of cases of COVID-19, which caused increased fear and anxiety for our students and staff, on top of the hurdle of many of them teaching and learning from home. As a division with the support from the Board, Dr. Spence led his team to create a number of processes to ensure that schools remain open five days per week. And more importantly, the schools would be clean, safe, and focused on teaching and learning. We also made sure to provide a virtual learning option for those families preferred that their students remain at home. In short, we were operating and overseeing two different school settings: managing a global pandemic, addressing student and staff concerns, communicating with the public divided by politics, and focusing on providing the best possible learning environment in every school, every classroom, every day. As the year progressed, recall the drastic increase in cases in November through March that resulted in significant student and staff absences. Rather than look to reduce services in our schools or closed buildings, Dr. Spence asked himself and his team to begin subbing on days where classes were not covered by existing substitutes. He also worked with the budget team at this Board to find funds to provide all staff with a $1,000 bonus in December to help boost staff morale. After four months of helping schools in this sub-initiative, COVID-19 cases decreased and the number of students and staff that were either vaccinated or previously had COVID-19 increased, which resulted in greater immunity to the virus and reductions in student and staff absences. After spring break, this provided central support to schools with a clear path to focus solely on teaching and learning as the year ended. Over the past two months, data clearly show the remarkable work done by our students and staff. Beyond accreditation, our graduating seniors were offered in excess of $85 million in scholarships and accepted over $54 million. Since Dr. Spence's arrival, our graduation rate has increased each year and is, with the class of 2021, was sitting at 94.9%. We will have the class of 2022 data soon. And over the same period, enrollment in advanced courses has increased. And for those who attend a two- or four-year college or university, the persistence rate from the freshman to sophomore years range from 82% to 86%, meaning our graduates are actively prepared to succeed at the post-secondary level. For anyone who needs more evidence by looking for comparisons to other similar school divisions, I offer that since 2016, 2017, all schools in Virginia Beach have been accredited. If you recall, upon Dr. Spence's arrival, Virginia Beach had 16 schools not accredited, which reduced to 12 after one year, to nine after a second year, and to zero in the third year. Since then, Virginia Beach has been in one of only a handful of divisions across the Commonwealth to have all schools accredited. Now, last year did take its toll on staff in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We lost a large number of highly qualified teachers to retirement or resignation because they literally had worked themselves to the breaking point. We have 52 of 86 schools with new administrative teams, 12 new principals to Virginia Beach, nine principals moved to new buildings, two new members of senior staff, and countless new leaders across all of our departments and offices. Given the newness of our staff and the transient nature of the workforce, it is important to know that they are watching and looking to see if this place, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, is where they want to remain, pursuing a long career in education. As school leaders, we know it will be very important to support every one of them, to mentor, to model, and to ensure they see that working in education is still one of the best careers one could ever ask for. Make no mistake, though, these new staff will also be impacted by outside pressures, including from national, state, and local media and politics. It is our job to ensure that our staff can focus exclusively on the job they have been hired to do and lift up the education profession. Because if we do not mind the store, so to speak, our new staff, those reaching the age of retirement, or those who have means to do something else, will leave us, and we cannot afford to have this happen. So why do I make this point? It's because we have a Virginia Beach Political Action Group that is putting information on their website that might be confusing or misleading for some members of the public. For example, this group posted that we are silencing parents and citizens who want to protect children from harmful materials. Yet we have two policies, 661 and 712, and two regulations, 661.2 and 712.1, that outline how a parent legal guardian, adult student, or citizen can challenge materials. We get to a point where this is no longer about politics, but about the need for clarity in our community and with our families. The truth is, parents can challenge both curriculum and library materials by following Regulation 661.2. And citizens can also challenge curriculum materials via Regulation 712.1 because all children have access to curriculum materials. After consulting with legal counsel, the regulations do not allow citizens without children in the schools to challenge library materials specifically because those materials are not required reading for all students. It's important to state that these kind of political campaigns can have a detrimental impact on staff and students, which means I have a duty to speak up. This misleading claims require valuable time from school staff to address, taking them away from duties that most benefit students, staff, this division, greater community, and they have a negative impact on staff morale. So thank you for letting me share. Now we'll discuss how we are currently keeping the Board in public inform on policy and regulation changes, as well as to share a new process we have initiated to share monthly with this Board, all policy and regulation changes. First, we have a link that's on BB Schools under the School Board tab where all updated policies and regulations are and have been posted. And I'm gonna let Regina show you where everyone, where that is this time.
Okay, so on your, um, School Board SharePoint site, on the left column, there's a new tab that says Policies and Regulations. That'll bring you to this page. You click on the current month, and it will list all the policies that have been updated in the month of, the current month was July of 2022. You click on any one of these, it'll automatically bring you to the policy, the red line version of the policy, or bylaw, or regulation. So again, it's going to be...
So Regina, that's the new feature. Can you show them on BB Schools?
Sure.
Under the About Us, where you go to Leadership, School Board, where that information's been available for many years.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. And this is the BB Schools website that the public accesses. And under School Board Policies and Regulations, right here it says Policy and Regulation Updates. They click on that. Again, this is the same information that we just saw on your SharePoint site. Good feature about this, public can go back these number of years, every month, all the policy, regulations, bylaws are listed that way.
So on the actual internet for BB Schools, this information has been provided and updated monthly since 2017, 18. What we are going to do, because it was brought out and it is correct, we need to be more, um, reportive to the Board that every month, before the first meeting of the month, we're going to update that information with all the policies and regulations that were done the previous month. So then if you go in there into the first meeting, and if you have any concerns about anything that's written, please let us know, we can address it. And in talking to Mr. Sutton, um, you know, we were under the understanding that operating the way we had was working with this Board because we hadn't received any concerns from Board members in the past five years. But we did receive a recent concern, so we are addressing that concern by adding in this new, um, document on your SharePoint site. It'll be a place you can go without having to go to the internet. Um, and I'll also say that in talking to Chairwoman Rye regarding 661.2, she did not feel that the language in 661.2 was explicit enough to let parents know that they had the opportunity to challenge library books. So we have adjusted 661.2, and I believe, John, do they have that? Do you have that in there? We have added some language in there which explicitly states in the first paragraph that parent legal guardians or adult students are able to challenge library materials not prescribed as part of curriculum because it is information that is in there, um, in their, in their messages. And then if I could finish, I just want to give the Board some context. Over the past nine months, we received 16 book challenges. And those 16 book challenges have come from one citizen, two parents, and one board member. One citizen has challenged one book. The two parents have challenged four books, and the one board member has challenged eleven books. Of these challenges, 12 have been completed with three challenges approved and nine challenges denied. Currently, we have four challenges in progress. Just some additional contacts, over the past 10 years, we have in total had this number of challenges. Yet we have similar policies and regulations in place. And to me, this begs the question, what changed? Was it a problem with policies or regulations, or something else? To know that Dr. Spence's team and this School Board have much to be proud of, and we embrace transparency. Our track record of success spans academics, innovation, sustainability, budgeting, state and national recognitions, and a community that appreciates the education we provide. Not only that, Virginia Beach City Public Schools was recently noted by a national publication as a sought-after city to live due to its excellent school division. In closing, we have much to be proud as Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a preeminent school division, the envy of many in a jewel in Virginia. And now is time for us to continue this great work with a new group of 65,000 young adolescent learners eager to gain knowledge and skills to make their dreams come true. So I appreciate the time, and I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, so I just want to point out bylaw 1-33 that Ms. Lanetti pointed out to me when I asked what the regulations were, or what the bylaws were regarding regulations. It states, "Regulations promulgated by the superintendent shall be provided to the School Board in a timely manner." These regulations were made, changes were made in mid-June. Um, I happened to come upon them when I was, I was searching the policy to review some things and went to the, went to the regulation and saw that they, there were major changes made to them. And I didn't know about the link that you talked about that was on the website. So these were not given to us in a timely manner, and they were serious changes. And these were issues that I was dealing with, with you and with the superintendent. I was challenging these books, and these changes, I can't challenge these books anymore. So it did impact me, and it was a serious issue. And your statement that there are community members out there making misleading statements, that's just not true. Let me tell you what Ms. Lanetti told me. Um, because I reached out to her and said, "Am I reading this regulation right?" And she says, "That regulation," meaning Regulation 661.2, "does refer to library materials, but I think that the intent was for library materials referred to in that regulation as for library materials used for curriculum purposes." And so I do believe that the intent was that parents could not challenge library books unless they were used in curriculum. And so for you to say that citizens and me are misleading the public, I think, is inappropriate. And if you have a particular thing that you think I've said in the public that is incorrect, please let me know, and I will correct that. But I went to our legal counsel for an interpretation on this regulation that she approved, and that was her interpretation. So I, while I, I'm glad that you have clarified this now, and it looks like parents can at least challenge these library materials, that's great. But citizens can't, and that was a huge change. I've asked for that to be put on the agenda for August 23rd for the Board to talk about it because I think this is a serious issue that the Board needs to establish, a policy on not someone who's unelected. We answer to the citizens, these are huge issues. We have pornographic and sexually explicit materials that are in our schools that we need to address. I brought one of those to you, and thank God it was removed because it was dangerous. But I can't bring those to you anymore. And it's my job as an elected official to make sure our children are safe and to represent the people of this city. And so I, I agree with you, we shouldn't be making this political, but you just did in your opening statement.
So Ms. Manning, I'll just say to you that, um, the intention for the changes for 661.2 came about after Policy 661 was changed. And it ruled the governance structure of the School Board is to govern through policy changes. And then is incumbent upon the administration to implement those policies through regulations. When 661 was changed, it focused solely on parent, legal guardians, and adult students. So we changed it in a manner that allowed parent, legal guardians, and adult students to continue to challenge instructional materials, including library materials. That was the intention and the way it was written and the way it was communicated out to anyone who put forth the challenge. Later, 712, Policy 712 was changed. As soon as Policy 712 was changed, we promulgated regulation to support 712, which was on citizens. And in that conversation with legal counsel, it was determined that citizens do not have, uh, interest to the level to challenge a library book, where a citizen should not be able to come in and tell a parent, "Your child cannot have access to that book as pleasure reading in the library." And because we're not going to allow a citizen who doesn't have a kid in school to dictate what's available to students in a school, we leave that to the parents. 712.1 was changed. You are correct, you did not get a direct mailing of the regulation change. That is being changed with the process that we have right now. On, on the particular site, it is, it is Students First Virginia, it says, "We also want citizens and parents to be able to challenge these books, as they have been able to do in the past." Parents can't challenge the books, the difference is citizens. And it says on this site, "We need to get people elected to withstand against porn peddlers." I don't appreciate being referred to as a porn peddler, and it needs to be called out. So the fact of the matter is, I can't speak to your interests, but I can tell you, as administration, we support the will of this Board. But this Board is an elected group, and the will of this Board comes with six votes.
You are absolutely right, it does. And as I pointed out, Ms. Lanetti told me that library books that were not part of curriculum were not included. So that is, you know, I'm gonna listen to our, I'm gonna listen to our, I have an email right here if you'd like to see it. Um, and, you know, we do, I am gonna still ask for this to be on the agenda on August the 23rd because I think this Board needs to have a conversation about it. The School Board members should be able to challenge these materials.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like to add that I'm also requesting it to be on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, it was, it was already added. Okay, that's right, just from, from Mrs. Smith. Okay, any, yes, of course.
Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of wondering, so we want to make sure that people without kids in the school aren't able to challenge any of this, but we happily take all their tax money. So we just want all the citizens to walk around with their wallets open and their mouths closed? Because that's really not the transparent appearance that you just seem to want to give.
I don't even got to respond to that.
Well, because there is no good response to that.
That's what we need to discuss on August 23rd, because, yeah, half of the citizens' taxes go to fund our schools. And a lot of grandparents are raising children that now are just citizens.
And if I'm paying, I'm saying, yeah. They have the right to challenge what they're paying for when it's inappropriate.
Obviously, they're hopeful.
Um, can I, can I, of course, can I just ask, since that was brought up, can I just ask Ms. Lanetti? So there is some clarity, I think, to the public about why maybe that statement was made, and that way we can let Ms. Lanetti actually, you know, um, help us understand where that might have come from so that, you know, there's no confusion legally about what might have happened.
The only area in the law that really speaks to this is NOSECU standard seven. And it talks about the right to challenge instructional materials and controversial materials. You have to have clear procedures for how to do that, and citizens are allowed to challenge it. It doesn't talk about non-instructional materials. When we, and you come up, and you've been in PRC, you're familiar with the areas we have. We had 712, which was controversial issues, and then we have over in 661, which is instructional materials. And there was a little bit overlap between them. We were trying to clarify the difference between where, when you use one procedure or the other. So as you're cleaning up 712 on controversial materials, as Dr. Alson pointed out, that's where you're putting the citizens into that particular procedure there. We were then trying to clean up 661, which has to do with instructional materials. And obviously, that is directly going to affect a parent or a student. Your student has been assigned the following things, and these are the materials that they must use. In which case, that's when a parent or student gets to say, "I disagree." And that's a procedure we've always had, you know, you can always come back and say, "I want an alternative assignment." You've always had the ability to go into a library and say, "I do not want my child checking out this book." So we're trying to distinguish where that was in instructional materials. At the same time, we've been talking, it was last week or so, about whether we needed another policy having to do with school library materials. And so we have not brought that, so it's not policy, it's regulation. We have not brought that, we're trying to discuss how that was going to happen. And there were differentiating on the fact that instructional materials are what the SOC is allowing you to challenge. And what you tried then, library materials is something the child just may go into a library and choose to check out at that point. You always have the ability as a parent to say, "I do not want my child checking these things out." The problem becomes, do you then have the ability to say, "I don't want anybody else's child checking this out"? And how were you going to do it? And that was where we're trying to distinguish when we need a separate regulation. There was some discussion earlier today, and rather than do a separate regulation having to do with how a parent or a child or student challenges the school materials, to add the line back in that you will now have school library materials being challenged in 661. And 661 is your instructional materials, again, and that goes to, and that makes sense that it's a parent or student who's been assigned to do this would want to challenge for their child. The bigger question was maybe something you'll have to take up next week, is what role does the public have in preventing other people still accessing certain materials? That's a bigger policy question you have, but there is no law that says you have the right to do that. What it says in the SOC is that you have to challenge instructional materials.
Well, can I just clarify though, just, just so we can make it perfectly clear, first, clear that none of these regulations prohibit it or would put us as a division in a position where if a parent decides that they want to challenge any material that their student has access to, or, or whatever the case, this regulation does not prohibit them from doing it.
Correct, and that procedure's always been, it's nothing new.
Okay, well, sorry, because I just want to, I think, because I was confused, and I, I just want to make sure that that is absolutely non-negotiable, that we understand that this is the way it is, that none of these regulations, whether a regulation or policy, prohibit a parent from challenging materials.
Correct, and an adult student is entitled to those.
Okay. But, Ms. Lanetti, that's not what you told me in this email here. It says that the intent was for library materials referred to in regulation is for library materials used for curriculum purposes. So that's a conflicting, you're, you're giving some conflicting information here.
Right, so you need to stay, and this is where you're gonna have to be careful with your terms. There could be, you need to write a, you need to write a report, and you may use any library material, the following library materials, write a report. In that case, those library materials would be part of your curriculum or your instruction materials. There might be other books in the library that were not assigned or something you would do that just seems, I'll call them pleasure reading just so I don't have a better term for it, but just in your library. That's the distinction between what 661 was given, or when I looked at it before the changes added today, was those things that are assigned to as instructional materials and that you will use as part of your class assignments.
Right, so the, but we're, I'm talking right now about books that are there for pleasure reading that are not a part of the curriculum. You told me that those could not be challenged.
Not by that regulation.
Correct, this is the one that's currently out there.
That was gonna change, because we were looking at a separate regulation to do that.
Thank you.
Now I'm confused, so, so does the regulation allow it or does it not?
Okay, it was added back in today to clarify that school library material, which I will distinguish with things that you're using for curriculum or instruction, may be challenged by parents and students. That has been added back into 661.
As of today.
Correct, to clarify it now that...
It was clarification, the original language said instructional materials, whether basal, supplementary, supplemental, or library materials may be challenged by a parent legal guardian of a student or adult student in BBCPS. So that was already in there, but it wasn't clear because the next paragraph talks specifically about instructional materials, whether or not.
Okay.
Um, it wasn't clear enough.
So we did need to amend it to...
I think we needed to amend it to make it personal, for the parents, as the ability...
So what she said was correct yesterday, but because of the backlash, it was amended.
Yeah, yes.
Exactly.
It was changed, exactly.
Not necessarily.
That's what legal counsel tells me. So if you're challenging legal counsel, isn't it because of what she interpreted, then...
Okay, and so, um, any, any other Board members have a question?
I can't let this go. I'm not gonna let it go. When you put something out to the public and you slander people, whether you mean to slander them or not, that's unethical, period. And I'm sorry, maybe you don't mean to slander people when you put something out and slander...
You slander me when you're telling the public that.
That's it, stop.
I have the floor.
I'm sorry.
Right now.
I have, no, I, I just took over, and we're gonna, we're gonna do this on the 23rd. We have a group of presenters here...
We have a group of presenters here. We have other matters to deal with and we're not gonna battle back before. So with that.
I wasn't battling back and forth. I had the floor. Thank you. Don't be interrupted.
I'm asking it to stop and I'm asking David Rhodes, please, um, to come to the podium for the presentation on varsity sports entry prices. Welcome, Mr. Rhodes.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Numbers, and Dr. Robertson. My name is David Rhodes, Coordinator of Student Activities in the Office of Student Leadership, and I'm here to make a presentation on varsity sports admission process. Virginia Beach City Health Schools offers a wide array of interscholastic athletic options for our students. We will be focusing on our high school varsity programs today. As you might know, our school year is divided into three distinct athletic seasons. On slide in front of you, you will see all of the varsity sports heard in our school division and the season in which each falls. Admission is charged for certain sports and those are designated within asterisks. These sports are played in facilities where a secured point of entry makes it possible to collect or verify tickets. As you can see from this slide, our school division charges an adult rate and students are admitted at a discount. Also, an individual who plans to attend a number of contests throughout the year can take advantage of our annual athletic pass. Depending upon the number of passes purchased, pass holder will receive a financial benefit if he or she attends more than eight or nine contests during the year. All of the ticket prices shown here are inclusive of an online ticketing fee of one dollar. In two thousand nineteen, prior to the pandemic, Virginia Beach Schools contracted with GoFan, the official online ticketing vendor of the Virginia High School League, to become our digital ticketing partner. A service fee of one dollar is charged to consumer for each ticket purchased. The decision was made to offer online tickets in response to community members who wanted to be able to buy tickets through an app on their phone without waiting in long lines, which sometimes form at football games and other popular sporting events. This venture into online ticketing was successful that year and then became necessary as a contactless safety measure when we resumed activities during the pandemic and we didn't sell paper tickets. Card readers will be used to accept credit cards this year for those who would prefer to not navigate a phone. Our ticket prices compared to those of other local school divisions are in line with our neighbors. I'll give you just a moment to look at this slide. The Virginia High School League restricts schools to a maximum number of regular season contests, which vary by sport. Here you'll see the number of contests allowed by the VHSO in sports in which admission is charged in Virginia Beach. The third column contains the number of contests likely to be held in Virginia Beach, therefore, under VBCPS's ticket pricing structure. In this slide, a fourth column is added to cost out the money spent on tickets by an individual who chooses to attend every contest held in Virginia Beach in that school. In this slide, a column has been added to note the savings an individual would realize if buying an annual pass at sixty five dollars instead of paying for each individual contest. Annual revenues received from high school ticket sales average one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Our athletic budget stands at five point four million dollars. So our ticket revenues fund less than ten percent of our overall expenses. The balance of our costs recovered by school board appropriations. Our most costly needs are listed before you. Although the school board funds a large majority of the athletic budget, revenue from ticket sales does help offset some necessary expenses. Available for any questions you would.
Um, yeah, I have two questions. The first one is, when you buy a pass, is it per sport or do you get into everything all year long?
Everything all year long.
Okay, so one will cover football, gymnastics, everything. And then the other is, some of these are played outside of the city. It only covers the ones in Virginia Beach, held in Virginia. Okay, thanks.
That's a great question.
Yes, the pass is the way to go. I have purchased many of them, especially if you have five children playing sports. All right, so I'm I'm looking at the budget page here. With the reorganization of all of our districts into all the six A's and all that stuff, has that reorganization, has that cost the school division money? Is it any more expensive?
It has in regard to postseason travel. So prior to the reclassification, all of our region tournaments were played locally. Now, for some of our schools, they have to travel for a region tournament. Some schools may have to travel as far as Roanoke. And then it's either Roanoke or Richmond. So that is an added costs.
So therefore, it's added cost to our parents, obviously, when they're traveling to Roanoke or someone's spending the night. Okay, when are we gonna go back?
I would not hold your breath, unfortunately.
Really?
Yeah, I think that there are too many schools in other parts of the state that enjoy the change. This was a change that Virginia Beach did not vote for. We were just outnumbered by some of the smaller schools. Do you receive some of their?
So is there any ongoing process or committee to re, to relook at this? Because I've talked to some of people in the committee in the past and and they tell me, they they say we might, we might be discussing that.
I think there might be a little bit of momentum to looking at going from six classifications maybe to five or four. That might help, uh, may be seen. But there is some momentum for that, but whether it will actually pass, I don't know whether it even come to a vote.
I mean, I can, I can understand the smaller schools, but you know, in these times, I mean, it's costing parents and coaches and school divisions. I mean, it's it's tacking on quite, quite an extra bill for these parents, so I would like to really look into that.
So I was one of three or one of four region directors when I was Principal Salem. And, um, two of the smaller regions, it made a lot of sense for them to go to six divisions versus three because of the amount of travel they had. And we simply got outvoted. And even though it it does cost more, there are still enough schools, and this is where the superintendent can get this changed. But there's enough school divisions where this plan is working well for them, but it doesn't work well for us. Not at all.
The smaller schools actually were not impacted financially like we were because they were already traveling. You think of the smaller schools in the western part of the state, they just aren't close to one another. Urban schools are close, so it wasn't as big of an issue for them to find a match, so that's why.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Man. Um, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. A constituent had reached out to me a few months ago, just concerned with the additional one dollar processing fee. And I I have to tell you, when I purchased that four dollar ticket and it got, a dollar got added onto it, I was like, whoa. Um, and as Ms. Ween said, all the travel that we have to do as parents, that one dollar can add up. So you mentioned that there will be credit card readers at the ticket gates. Uh, two questions. Is that gonna still charge the additional processing fees? And is there option, a cash option?
There's no plans for a cash option this year. There's a lot of factors that went into that. Um, I think that our schools, when we realized that we weren't having a cash option during the pandemic, it really was something that benefited students to a great degree in managing their activities. There's a lot of things that they have to do with cash, record keeping, tickets, controls, all of those that the online presents to them a a great efficiency and safety, so that was the reason.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the bookkeeping part of it, but I also understand it's hard for parents, especially right now. So I mean, if we can look at reduce, I mean, it's, I mean, a dollar on one ticket seems like a lot. Is there, I mean, have we looked into, is that the best option we can get?
Well, um, when we went with GoFan, we put out an RFP and we had several vendors who were interested in our business. And GoFan was the best option. That was four years ago. I think that the contract is a five-year contract, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I just have two questions. Um, is there kind of, I guess, an explanation or some reasoning why some sports are charging admission versus others, like volleyball, I assume, happening in a gym, basketball is happening in a gym, why one sport and not the other?
Yes, ma'am, it's a great question. So there's a lot of variables depending upon the sport. Volleyball, for instance, we have to start that a little bit earlier than our other team's sports because it's not a timed sport. So you could have two evenly matched teams and the games could go on and on and on. So it's important for us to start early so that students can get home in a decent hour. When you start volleyball early, you have other teams that are in the, other students and teams practicing wrestling, whatever, in the building. So it's hard to control for ticketing purposes. So for that reason, we don't charge for volleyball because there are students coming in through all sorts of different doors and it's just really not possible to control. You, if, there are other sports that, for instance, tennis, where there isn't a point of entry. The tennis courts are right next to the park. Anybody can watch a tennis match. Golf is is just impossible to charge at at a golf courses. So there are different variables for each sport and decisions have been strategically made as to which sports to charge.
And I understand where there would be difficulties there. It is still difficult sometimes to swallow that some of the the sports are, parents are having to pay to come support their child, where other sports don't have that barrier. Um, have we considered any opportunities for financially struggling families to have some level of a pass so that we don't have any students that can't have a parent coming out to sports to support them because it's an additional seventy dollars a season for that parent to come out in addition to all the other increased fees?
We, we tried something a few years ago that was fairly unique. We call it a family pass. And individuals could list numbers of their immediate family on the pass and pay one fee, which I think was somewhere in the range of a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars. And every member of their family could benefit from that one fee and and come and go. The problem is that defining a family became problematic. And people were putting all sorts of people who lived in their house. But, you know, so that became very difficult. And that's where we moved to the current pass structure that we have now, trying to protect the the hundred and twenty, the the benefit that families were getting. Um, so we have, our pass structure right now is that if you buy more than three passes, you're gonna get a ten dollar break. So for families that have to buy multiple passes, you have four people in your family, you're only gonna pay fifty five dollars a pass versus sixty five dollars. So that was the way that we were trying to help families. That's, that's what we did.
Okay, would there be a, um, I guess, a significant, uh, deficit, financial deficit to our division? If we did something like, if you receive free or reduced lunch, you get a pass that has three punches on it so that at some point during the season, you can have three support people come in and cheer you on without having to make financial arrangements in your home?
Um, well.
Just only affects some sports. Some moms are going to be able to support their children because they are playing volleyball versus basketball.
Sure. I think, um, I think you'd have to have that balance of, you know, what's too much and what isn't, and what's a benefit and all of that. Um, and I think that would take, um, a little bit of arithmetic and looking at, but it's. I do know that there, there are, I'm familiar with Williamsburg, James City County, where they offer um, a parent pass. I don't know the details of it, but that's something we could explore. That just came to my attention last week.
I'd love it if we could explore just some, something so that once or twice a season, if, you know, families are getting free lunch, they have already met a threshold for income and they are coming out of pockets still to do the sports stuff. They're making that happen somehow. And it means a lot because to see their, their person, whoever their person is, and family can mean any, any kind of anything, having their person there. And so I want us to explore possibilities to make that happen for everybody. So I was next in the queue. So, uh, on the collegiate level, and I do travel to every, every baseball game, um, parents, this, the student athletes are required to put their parents' names on a piece of paper if their parents are coming to those games. I mean, they keep a list. And so, um, it is a guest pass. And, um, we, we do not pay to go because our name's just put on the list. And so, um, that might be a better way to allow a parent to come and see, you know, their name has to be on that list in order to get in for that game. Um, but then there was another, so the flip side of that, Jessica and I, and I agree with you, and I actually think it's a great solution, but, um, I was thinking, well, those sports that don't charge admission don't get that money. And so, um, you, but then I asked Dr. Robertson, so I just wanted to make sure. So it goes into a general fund, correct?
Correct.
And that can be spread across the board with other sports.
Correct. So we're a little bit unique in Virginia Beach because we have what we call a central athletic. A lot of school divisions don't do this, but it's a, it's a, an equity type of thing that was put into place in the seventies. So you might think that when Bayside High School sells a ticket, Bayside High School reaps the benefits of that ticket. But Bayside High School's tickets are filled with Comex, First Colonial, Greenwood. They're all pooled into a central athletic fund and dispersed evenly into draw accounts that schools can use that money to purchase uniforms and equipments to meet their needs. Um, and that was just, that was an equity thing that was done in the seventies. So I wanted to make that point, um, just, just for your awareness. But when a ticket is sold to a football game, it doesn't mean that that money's only going to football. We're going to make more money off of football, as you can imagine, than any other sport. But tennis has to have a funding source, swimming has to have a funding source, they all do. And as I said, we'll bring in about four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in ticket sales, but our budget's five point four million. So any, any reduction in that four hundred and twenty five has to be made up somewhere. And that's what we have to figure out if we're going to.
It's why sometimes you'll see, um, baseball moms working a concession stand for a wrestling tournament because we understand and we thank them, you know, for that opportunity and this industry.
So, um, I like the idea of possibly looking into helping, not just, not just the kids who who may be qualified for free and reduced lunch, but you know, everybody, every parent needs to be able to support their kid who's playing a sport. And so I like the idea of putting names down, you know, and, you know, maybe, maybe we could, we could start something like that. But I do have a question. Mrs. Manning pointed out that when you pay for a ticket, there's another dollar surcharge on, added to that. Is, are you telling me that, like, if we charge an adult seven dollars, their real cost is eight dollars? Is that correct?
We're, we're charging, our base price is six dollars.
Okay.
The consumer would pay seven dollars.
I see, I see. So that, that's where the seven dollars comes into being, instead of saying we're actually reaping six dollars. Another dollar is going to some other source out there.
Yes.
Okay.
The vendor's keeping one dollar. And if you saw on the graph, seven dollars is pretty much in line, even with that one dollar extra.
Right.
Pretty much in line with with our neighbors.
I see, okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that. I wasn't, I wasn't sure about that. Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
So I, I was just wondering, a couple of things. First of all, if, do we have any kind of scholarship? So let's just say that we have families who really support athletics and would be okay helping to support maybe low-income families or, you know, those type of things. Do we have any? Do we have any kind of a scholarship ability to help support those who might not be able to afford? And then, maybe families could apply for a voucher or something like that. I also do like the idea of putting your name onto a list, so at least one parent can attend. But I just am curious if we have any, any opportunities for, for people that might want to. I mean, even communities supporting our division and supporting athletics, to be able to contribute to the fund themselves, you know, and make external contributions. Yeah, so.
We don't have a mechanism set up for anything of that nature right now. There are, many of our schools have booster clubs, some to greater degrees than others. Booster clubs help with funding of equipment and uniforms and needs.
That's for that specific sport, right?
For that sport. So, that, that helps too. But we don't have a mechanism where we are collecting or crowdsourcing or anything like that, money from the community to help out.
Because I was just like, the BBF, like, we could contribute directly to the foundation, which then, you know, I'm just wondering if there's like an athletic fund that people could contribute to that might help, you know, subsidize some of that. Just so we can't have parents, at least, at least one parent go to an event. So, or, you know, I understand the logistics of having a cash option that's problematic in some areas, but.
Because you're on the audit committee and, you know.
Yes. Cash receipts can be very much a problem. But I was wondering if, like, they pay, let's just say they pay sixty-eight dollars or, or know that they want to go, and then they get a punch for five games. And that way, they are able to save, you know, they, like, at the beginning of the year, they can at least save money on some tickets, you know, where it's in a more controlled environment. You know, and, and at least, at least be able to save, because I know, I mean, that's why I pay my credit card off at the end of the month because I don't want to pay interest. I mean, it makes sense, right? So, it's, it's just, you know, so, yeah, I was just, if we could explore some of those, that'd be, that'd be really awesome. But I would love if we could maybe think about, like, how BBF has the foundation, how we could have maybe athletic foundation to help subsidize, so.
Yeah, all good ideas. I look for the parent pass. They do it all in colleges. It's easy. It's not going to impact us that much. And each child will be guaranteed because they will have one or two, and the name's got to be on the list. It's quick. It's easy. Parent pass. Thank you. I miss you.
So, if you have somebody who buys a pass, like, say I buy a pass and I'm able to go this week and then dad's able to go next week. Is it attached to a person? So, any one person in the family could use it? Okay. And something else, actually, I thought of when, when you were talking, you were talking about people volunteering in concession and people who can't necessarily afford the tickets. What if people had credit for volunteering to get into these games?
So, let me, let me, when you, I think I answered your question incorrectly. So, when you buy a pass, it is downloaded onto the app. And I don't believe that that's transferable. I believe that it's for the individual or else people would just be handing your pass off every time. So, I believe it's not transferable.
You're correct. Why would it matter if it was not, if it was given to somebody else? Because it's our, it's a paid for pass. I mean, like, why do, why would we care if, if we decided to give it to a son?
I probably need to double check on that. I understand your question. I'm not sure if a pass can be transferred. I mean, you, you would have to, anybody, anybody could give someone else their account, give that to your daughter or son or something like that. So, that's, that's something that we can't control. So, in that regard, yes, it would be transferable. I think the intent is that it would be the pass holder. You're only going to get one admission. Once it's validated, no one else can give in all this. So, it's probably a moot point.
No, I'm sorry, that's season pass.
Yes, season pass. So, when you enter the Cox Bayside Football Game, that path, and you use the pass, you show your phone, you're verified, no one else can use that pass later. There's one admission on that pass, whether it's Suzie or Johnny or whoever is using it. The pass has been paid for and used.
There are some things that we'll get back to you on, investigating the dollar fee, the feasibility of a free reduced lunch pass, feasibility of a scholarship, feasibility of doing a parent pass, and whether or not there's transferability with the pass itself beyond the app.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Now, welcome, Mr. Delaney. We will now be talking about maximizing student engagement on our cell phone update.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. This afternoon, we provided information regarding the development of a cell phone regulation three six five point one, along with the rationale for the regulation as we continue to create opportunities for students to maximize student engagement in our classroom. School Board Policy three dash six five, Security of Building and Grounds Cellular Phones and Other Portable Telecommunication Devices, states that all possession or use of portable communication devices such as cellular telephones or other handheld computing devices shall be regulated and or prohibited at each school or school event as deemed necessary to prevent disruption of the educational environment and to maintain order on school property and at school activities. A minor revision to this policy will include removing the reference to bring your own device guidelines. BYOD guidelines are, really need to be discontinued. They are no longer pertinent to our current instructional environment. The guidelines were developed or written prior to the implementation of our one-to-one device initiative. In most cases, there's no longer a need for a student to bring their own device. As you guys know, over the past several years, it's become apparent that cell phones and earbuds create a significant disruption to the educational environment. And as a result, a new regulation three dash six five point one will be introduced for the 2022-2023 school year. Student use of personal cell phone, personal communication devices and accessories, such as earbuds or wireless personal headphones, are prohibited during instructional time and in instructional settings. Students may not have personal cell phones, personal communication devices or accessories on or in use during instructional time or a location allows a student to hear or see the activated device during instructional time. All such items must be stored in a personal backpack or similar personal bag, teacher-designated areas within the instructional settings, lockers or in a personal vehicle. Such items should not be kept on the person or in the clothing of a student as doing so allows student access to the device with ease. And essentially, the device must be turned off and put away. The instructional setting means any location where a staff member is providing instructional, instruction-related, administrative, medical or health-related activities, including but not limited to classrooms, libraries, swallows, auditoriums, gymnasiums and inside and outside physical education areas, performing arts areas, locker rooms or assigned room within the period of the school day. Department of School Leadership and working with school principals can establish restrictions specific to elementary, middle and high school level as deemed necessary to prevent this disruption of the educational environment and to maintain order. It's important to share the why behind this, this change. We considered several factors when deciding to prohibit cell phones, earbuds and other accessories during instructional time and from the instructional setting. We received feedback from our stakeholders, including students, teachers, administrators, parents, and many of you on the school board, if not all of you, on the negative impact of cell phones and earbuds on student engagement, participation and learning in the classroom. Additionally, our strategic plan comes to 2025 goal on student well-being. The digital resources currently available to students in our schools and student safety and discipline are all considered when making this decision. And to spend a moment to discuss each of these factors. In conversations with principals, teachers, school board members, parents and students, it's become evident that the use of cell phones and earbuds during instructional time is disruptive to the educational environment, really not conducive to productive learning experiences and often the source of disciplinary intervention. Much has changed, as you know, since the policy was last amended in 2020, 2015. The continued rise of social media and the technology that competes for student attention can be detrimental to student learning and student well-being. A cell phone is involved where making phone calls and sending text messages is not the most common way that our students use this device. Now, they spend the majority of their time on apps, responding to notifications and posting content. Using this device consistently during the school day has a significant impact on student focus and ultimately on student learning. Studies that analyze the relationship between phone use, notifications, social media and mental health virtually always demonstrate a net negative. Kelly McGonigal, a health psychologist from Stanford University, addressed this in her book, The Willpower Instinct. She concludes that when students are allowed to hold on to their phones during class, we are asking them to demonstrate considerable willpower to reject their habits to check their notifications, respond to buzzes and communicate with friends sitting near them. I think we can all relate to that. Student phones are actively and intentionally working against the goals of learning. According to educational author Doug Limoff, inconsistent attention is a significant variable in classrooms. He states that half-focused or fleetingly focused learners master things more slowly and with more difficulty. According to Limoff, attending to attention, building habits of sustaining focus is right now one of the most important things that teachers can do. As you've seen me present several times, I always reference Compass to 2025. In any of my presentations, I think it's important to do so in matters such as these. Our strategic plan was developed, and this is a reminder, but sometimes I think people fail to realize this, that it's developed with significant stakeholder input. And it provides plan for BBCPS staff to execute and monitor. As a reminder, Goal Two, Compass to 2025, is focused on student well-being. This particular goal is focused on creating a learning environment that strengthens the social, emotional skills of students needing to become balanced, resilient learners who are personally and socially responsible, as outlined in our graduate profile. Specifically, Strategy Six of Goal Two involves developing students' digital wellness by helping students make responsible decisions in their use of technology, removing the distractions of cell phones and earbuds from the instructional environment during instructional time. And building the habits of sustaining focus will assist us with achieving this goal. The common concern shared by advocates of cell phones in the classroom is that cell phones provide students with instructional resources to support student learning. As you may recall, at the school board retreat last, last month, we provided an update of the evolution of instructional technology in our school division. Unlike many school divisions across the country and state, we are extremely unfortunate that our students currently have access to instructional resources through our school-based devices and our learning management system. Because of these resources, there's no need for students to access their cell phones for instructional purposes. Our students are expected to bring a fully charged, school-issued device to school every day. An additional concern expressed by parents is that removal of cell phones from the classroom does not allow them to contact their child during an emergency. In working with the Office of Security and Emergency Management, we would like to reinforce that the cell phone does not necessarily correlate with security. All staff members have access to communication devices during instructional time and can contact the school office should emergencies arise. We also want to recognize the reality that during an actual school emergency, students who do access their phones in such situations will do so without penalty as long as it does not impact the school's response to that emergency. For the, it is also important to note, for the 2021-22 school year, there are over a thousand reported cell phone violations across the school division. We've seen examples of students who have used their phones during instructional time in a manner that can lead to other disciplinary infractions. Board members, all of us, we've seen the impact of this through social media threats targeting schools, in student disciplinary hearings, and from parents that spoke to the board about concerns regarding social media posts from students. In all of these scenarios, this can create a significant disruption to student engagement and student learning. While we've had many conversations on who should be responsible for compliance, we decided the ultimate responsibility lies with the student. The student is responsible, refrained from accessing or using their cell phone or earbuds during instructional time and in the instructional setting. As was shared earlier in the presentation, we want to maximize student engagement in the classroom while also developing a learning environment that builds the habits of sustaining focus and strengthens the skills to be balanced, resilient learners that are personally responsible. Our strategic plan obligates us to develop students' digital wellness by helping students learn to make responsible decisions in their use of technology. We ask that a strong parent guardian partnership occurs in supporting this endeavor. We would like parents and guardians to set the expectations with their child about being actively engaged in the classroom and to monitor cell phone use, not only in school, but at home. We encourage families to talk about the importance of using technology and social media wisely. We have resources through our B-Social site that can be of assistance to families. Again, we cannot stress enough the importance of students engaging daily in their learning process. We ask that parents work extremely closely with their child's teacher and school administration in matter regarding their child's behavior. This partnership is essential in supporting student achievement, future aspirations and well-being. Teachers and staff members will enforce the terms of this regulation as well as other applicable regulations and policies in a consistent, fair manner. Teachers must, however, follow the prescribed disciplinary guidelines. There's always an expectation that teachers and administrators communicate concerns with parents and guardians and make decisions that are supported by school board policy and student conduct. I'd like to remind the board and anyone watching this presentation, the primary goal of this regulation is to maximize student engagement in the classroom by removing a significant distraction. Although we understand that students who violate the policy and regulation will receive discipline, the motivation behind this decision was not a focus on punishing students. The focus at all schools is on student learning. Administrators, teachers and teacher assistants and central support staff work diligently to implement and share teaching practices that foster deeper learning engagement. They're committed to strengthen the use of our student response teams, interior interventions and support to provide academic interventions and accelerations for learners at all school levels. We do acknowledge that this change will initially be challenging for students. They'll need our support and consistency enforcement as they return to the classroom. I'm confident that they will rise to that expectation. We also understand the importance of communicating this information and change to our students, parents, teachers and administrators. Department of School Leadership will review the regulation with principals in the next week and discuss expectations for the upcoming school year. Principals will continue to work with teacher leaders and staff during in-service week to emphasize the need for consistency, share procedures for addressing violations and the expectations for communication with families. The change in regulation, we shared with families during a back-to-school webinar, a BBCPS alert now about the community and staff highlighting the new regulation. Principals will be expected to share this information in newsletters, back-to-school nights and during streamer orientations. Know the school divisions across the state and the country are looking at ways to restrict cell phones in the classroom. It is certainly a challenge that we must be willing to take on. We outlined several factors that were taken into consideration when making this change from staple feedback, the impact on student learning, achieving the goals of our strategic plan, the access to digital resources and student safety. Once again, our ultimate goal in removing cell phones and earbuds for the instructional setting is to maximize student engagement by removing a significant distraction. It is an envi, it is to create an environment where students effectively interact with other students and their teacher while engaging in the contact. At this time, Mike McGee, Director of Student Leadership, and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Should be applaud.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I have great faith in our students actually. I, they'll, I, they'll, they'll be fine. They'll be, I mean, there are the rules now and hopefully the teachers are, you know, well, all right.
Well, we, what I found through teaching, coaching and administration, we raise the expectations for students, you set processes in place. They tend to respond very quickly. The adults usually take a little bit longer.
We see that. So, Ms. Sanders.
So, I was glad to hear that you're not putting the expectation or the responsibility of holding on to those phones on, on the teacher. We're not going to have, like, you know, shoe storage things up there. Put your phone in there. We're not doing that. We're just going to ask students or tell, have rules that students will not have their phones out during class time.
Let me clarify that for you, Ms. Anderson. There is the possibility for a teacher for, to say, I do want you to store it in this area. It's not an obligation for them to do so. What I think you're also referencing is. What I think you're also referencing is, we're not asking teachers to confiscate the devices that was done for years. Which created a significant confrontation for the teacher and the student and the administration when a parent would have to come up and and get that device. And quite frankly, I think that was in many reasons why teachers did not enforce the policy was to avoid that confrontation. The third kids that were watching that confrontation kind of joined the situation. So we wanted to remove that expectation from teachers on that end of not being, not putting themselves, they have to address the behavior. But, you know, and we can all understand if somebody took my cellphone right now and ran out the door, I think I'd probably chase him down. So I think we understand how that creates a level of anxiety for parents. I may not catch him.
So, so you said that administrator's plan to address the procedures for addressing student to may not conform. And I do realize that we're going to have quite a few discipline problems at the beginning of the year. That's a possibility. I realize that there will be many students who will conform easily to this and many parents who tell their students, we expect you to conform to this, you know, put your phone in your bookbag or you indicated they can't have it on their, in their clothing.
Should not have it on their clothing. Now, when I make the statement around elementary, middle and high schools, they have to look at some things that have a different disruption to the educational environment. I'm going to give you an example. Middle schools really have a challenge if students are on that phone in the cafeteria. They find a lot of the disruption comes out of that because they don't see it in the classroom as much. Elementary schools, very few cellphone violations in the developmental needs of those students require a certain level of response by that teacher and that administration. I think we all understand that. I think we all also understand that where we see this problem most often in the classroom is on the high school level. So when you look at that opportunity to say, just put it away and let's focus on instruction. We do not want to turn our teachers into police officers that are monitoring every kid that walks in the room to see what they have. Middle schools do not typically allow backpacks in the classroom because of, you know, they're not always safety coordination sometimes can be an issue. So there are opportunities where a student may have it on their person that this teacher may have to address. They're increasing the risk of themselves getting in trouble and doing that. Because as I shared, all of us have been in this situation. You feel it buzzing in your pocket. The idea is how long can I wait before I can check this? And I'm really putting myself through my own personal torture of how long I can wait. So that is the guidance we are providing students is how to avoid the punishment and engage in the learning. I think, I just want to stress that we're not here. Say, we're just trying to punish kids. We need them actively involved, developing relationships with their peers, developing relationships with their teachers, engaging in face-to-face contact and dialogue to really support what we're trying to take in the future.
So, so we shouldn't though have hear anymore of students and this, this always used to really, really get to me when, when the student would say they were in front of us for discipline reasons and and they would say, well, the teacher told us to take our phones out and do whatever because we're finished with our work. That's why I have my phone out. We shouldn't hear that now, correct?
You should not. I'm not saying will not happen because we're going to work our best to enforce it. But if you look at the regulation of the teachers and staff members, number four specifically talks about that teach students may not be authorized to use personal communication devices to fill instructional times or to occupy students in lieu of providing instructional activities or as a reward. So an example of this also is, and this will be one of the more challenging ones on the high school level is what students are doing during the academic sport block. And so you heard often when we talked about flexible scheduling, those students said, I need this time to catch up on my work. We need to reinforce that need that yes, this is not 90 minutes for you to, you know, to play a game or do whatever. It is time to engage in the work that you should be moving to get ahead or stay, stay on. That's going to be a challenge. So I'm telling you that from that point of view that, you know, we strive for perfection, but we also understand human behavior.
Because I've heard from teachers who have indicated that they're worried about this, you know, for that reason. You know, and so my, my, my response has been there will be guidelines in that you're indicating that administrators are going to back teachers when they have these problems. I don't want to get a email from a teacher who says, you know, I have, I have had these students who would not put their phone away. I wrote them up. Administrators said, I don't want to see that. I don't want to see that. I don't want to see that student for that reason, you know, administrators have to back the teachers on this.
I'll tell you, the largest saying this is a distraction is administrators. They spend more time on social media and phones than teachers ever did. They spend a significant amount of time of their day of dealing with cellphone issues. So I can tell you they're, they're just as fine with it as well. But they also recognize the reality of our students and where they're going, that they have to learn a level of personal responsibility.
And then this is, this is on parents too. We have to have the help of parents on this. I hope all the parents who are listening will understand that we need their guidance and their support on this as well.
And so just looking at the clock, it's 5:15. It's Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Williams. Not cutting anybody off, but we also have Miss Ingram here.
Okay, I'll be quick. Just want to point out that when Dr. Smith was principal, I visited his school and I was just amazed. He had a rule of no phones and he, I mean, it was just amazing. I would go into the cafeteria and kids were talking to one another. They weren't looking at their phones. So if Dr. Smith is a part of this, hopefully I know that it's going to be a smooth process. I think this is going to help us with teacher retention because almost every teacher I talk to, they say that this is a huge problem. So my question, and it's a little bit on the line with, with Ms. Anderson. You know, we have speed limits, but people aren't going to follow the speed limit if they know there's not a penalty. So are we going to spell out what the penalty is? So parents know, so students know, so teachers know?
We already have it in our code of conduct in terms of penalty, the range of those penalties. It can go anywhere from a warning to out-of-school suspension. Obviously, that's not, we don't want to be putting kids out of the classroom. We're trying to maximize student engagement for a cellphone violation. What typically happens, Ms. Manning, that it escalates into another behavior. And it escalates into something else that then allows us to then say, that's not just a cellphone violation. That's another component. Posting inappropriate pictures is not a cellphone violation. That's another code. So it's already written in there. We will work with principals around what the expectation should be, understanding the challenge that exists. We don't necessarily want to see kids sitting in ISS all day with one cellphone, but especially early.
I mean, could it be that the parent, we have to come pick up the phone? I mean, could we do something like that?
We have some procedures in place to require the parent to come in and meet with administration if this continues. We have the SRT process and others. We can venture a guess if this goes well, student academic performance is going to increase and those that are not approving are probably on their cell phones. And we can intervene in those situations much quicker.
Okay, thank you.
We also brought, according to the regulation, that if you continually violate it, we can actually prohibit you from even having it on.
Okay.
So as opposed to now put it away, we could wait for that student, you violated this so many times, you cannot have that device with you at school. So hopefully that will help.
Okay, thank you.
Sweet.
Just thank you, thank you. We've been hearing this for years. I wish it would have come a little bit earlier, but I'm not complaining. I thank you for, for bringing it back to student engagement of academics and each other and mental health of our students. When I hear from high school teachers, a teacher said that she got her kids to take out their cellphone. It was in the spring and, and find the app of how much you're on it a day. And there was nobody in her class that had less than 10 hours a day. It was 10 to 13 hours. And she said that is typical. So mental health, student engagement, engagement to academics, that's exactly, we're on point and we need to really support our teachers, get the parents online. I think everybody's going to be overjoyed with this.
We need to model that behavior. That's another component. Teachers, model that behavior.
Make sure my phone's on right now.
So we're going, we meant to put regulation 365.1 in your package. So we made copies. So you'll have those to see exactly how we spell these things out.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay. I don't think anyone's ever gotten around to applause up there, so.
Well, just, I asked if my parents come your way, you send them back to the principal and the school and let them make sure they can handle this. So thank you.
Okay, welcome, Melissa Ingram.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chairman, I'm with the board, Dr. Robertson. So here again to discuss upcoming, upcoming work at the school administration building. As you know from our past discussions, there'll be an extensive amount of work coming up in the near future that can't get postponed here at school admin building. We're in an unfortunate position to have Hollywood annex to help alleviate space needs for a short period of time while this work will be conducted. So again, school administration building system is originally designed or unfortunately very aged and have been causing issues throughout the building. Several years ago, as you may recall, in 2018, we had the opportunity to remove the building from the municipal center's cold water loop and replace the system with a chiller. This helped improve the building system's ability to better control temperature and humidity.
Really?
Yes. However, this is just the first stage of the solution. It didn't solve all the issues. And major components of the age building systems are still in need of replacement. So we now have the opportunity to continue to correct the ventilation and better adjust airflow temperatures for our building in this upcoming phase of construction. We'll be removing the building from the municipal center hot water loop. In order to come off this city's hot water loop, we'll be installing some new components to the heating and cooling system, the HVAC delivery system, a new boiler, associated electrical modifications and improved ventilation throughout the building. This will allow all areas of the school administration building to now be more efficiently cooled and heated. This upcoming work will be extensive and will impact nearly all office spaces within SAB, which must of the work being involved above the ceiling plenum. We'll also be taking this opportunity to make some modifications to the school board room related to ceiling, lighting and BBT in their handsets, as well as improvements to the front lobby with ceiling and lighting replacements. A contract for this work was awarded to Diki Kirby, which went in front of you in the school board on May 24th, 2022. So in order to do this extensive work effectively and stately, staff will have to move outside of the building. We're planning for use of the Hollywood annex during this construction to be utilized as a temporary work location for staff. We're fortunate to have this annex to be able to use rather than phasing this construction and moving people in and out of workspaces into portable or other temporary workspaces. So again, we'll anticipate this move to occur from October to November 2023 until, October to November 2022, just a couple of months until the end of the school year. As you'll see later in the presentation, we defined spaces at Hollywood annex for offices to continue working together in addition for, to spaces for school board activities. We presented a contract to master contractors for this work, which went in front of the school board on June 28th, 2022. With these moves and the related works impacting the entire school administration building, also want to remind you that the location of school board meetings will also move. You see in, in front of you here, we discussed earlier this winter, having school board meetings in the auditorium of Hollywood annex with additional spaces, spaces right next door, revitalizing abandoned forest rooms for activities which currently occur in room 113 and the Einstein lab. At our, at our last discussion with you, there was some concerns for with the locate, with the new location of school board meetings, the proximity for public access to those. As you can see here, Hollywood annex is on the top right of this map here, which will be the temporary work location and the school board administration building is almost center closer to the bottom there of the building. So they're in very close proximity. Parking, we have public parking, both at school administration building and Hollywood annex are fairly comparable with parking available in the front of Hollywood annex as well as in the rear of the building and utilizing the bus stop there. Public transportation was also brought up. You can see there in the blue dot on this map, HRT Route 33, Princess Anne and DeGrasse Way. It's roughly 2,200 feet from the entrance to Hollywood annex and roughly 1,200 feet from the entrance to school administration building. So the same bus stop can be used by the public for our location. And again, we spoke a little bit about the plan of the temporary work location plan for HRA. As you can see, each color code here designates a different department in this school administration building that will then be moved to Hollywood annex. We took some great lines to try to make sure that they stayed in close proximity for collaboration purposes. As you can see on the bottom right, close to the legend there, that's the auditorium spaces. The auditorium space where school board meetings will be held. And the areas just to the north of that in purple would be our locations for activities that normally occur in this room, the Einstein lab or in room 113. So looking at the timeline here, we've already begun some move meetings with staff, including the Office of Superintendent, Clerk for the Board and School Board Legal Counsel, which will have close proximity to other school board functions as well in Hollywood annex. Construction has started in July. Wall partitions and electrical work already be putting up. It's going very well. The contractors have been fantastic. You can see we will continue move meetings through August and September, asking staff to pack distribution services of providing boxes and purge any additional items they might not need due to the extensive amount of work in the building. Staff will not be able to come back into the building until the work is completed. You can see here as well, in October of 2022, we're, we're shooting for those last two weeks to have to move the first half of offices with November, the first two weeks of that month to, to be able to move the rest of the offices if all goes smoothly. As well in November, we're looking at the possible last school board meeting to occur November 22nd. So by Thanksgiving week, if all goes well, we'll all have moved out of, out of this formal school administration building and into Hollywood annex. Now, as with some of our other construction projects, we're having some supply issues with the electrical connectivities for both this building and Hollywood annex. So we'll update these schedules as time goes on and we've advised all staff and advising you as well right now in case there's any delays. And so to that effect, looking at December timeline, December 13th or January 10th would be the alternate, would be the first school board meeting at Hollywood annex. And so again, we're hoping in June 2023, we will be moving back to the school administration building. And again, as I mentioned before, with any supply chain issues, we will notify you months ahead of time that that needs to be deleted at all. But, but hopefully we're doing pretty well. So just as a recap, again, there's an extensive amount of work about to be done in this building, school administration building. And we're going to be using Hollywood annex for roughly seven months time period as a temporary work location and school board meeting location. Happy to answer any questions that I have.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, this portion of the meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at 6:00.